...town council meeting for October 20th. We'll come to the board. Mayor Volko, please.
Buckle is here.
Ryan here.
Good valley, yes.
We have a quorum. Let us stand and hold brief open silence. I would note that today is the one year anniversary of the passing of Mike Sullivan and Mr. Stonek. And let's remember them. They were key citizens in this town and contributed a lot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public... do we have no visitors proceeding? Do we have any public comments?
One.
One, alright.
De'Angelo. Good evening, councilman. I was just wondering why we have to many policemen? Didn't we just hire another one? What's the reason for? I thought we did have enough crime. Could you answer me? Could you answer me?
Matter of town council policy, that we do not answer questions asked in public comment?
Oh, we don't ask questions and we don't answer?
We don't answer them during the meeting?
Oh.
We don't answer them during the meeting. I request that you submit your question writing at least a little easier to keep track of what's going on, but we can provide an answer to that.
Okay, can I put my hands to...
Uh...
Have a quote.
Time quote.
Time quote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And any requests like that will be responded to. You will be answered and written.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Anything else? Alright, let's go on to the consent agenda. The motion to approve the agenda format.
A move.
Second. All in favor?
Uh...
The agenda is approved. There's a motion to approve the minutes.
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, is there any discussion within it? Any changes?
Yes.
Please go ahead, Joan.
One title.
Okay.
It's on our page eight in the iPad. And I'm sorry, we haven't done the report yet. It's just the word "from" instead of "from."
Which meeting?
In the... The regular meeting.
Do you business the whole business?
September 18th.
Page eight.
Yes. Okay.
The other...
That's the only issue that I have at all.
Anyone else have any more comments or a...? All in favor of approving minutes as submitted with the change that has been moved by the gentleman panel? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minister approved as presented with the change. Next is the treasurer's report.
Good evening. I'd first like to introduce... I'd first like to introduce our new finance inspector, De'Quan Lee Stan. Since De'Quan is a lawyer, she's got a county degree and I think she'll round out her team like she's already proven to be very, very helpful. She's very happy to help.
Welcome. Welcome to K. Charles. Very happy for your help.
Yes.
Sure that he will.
Alright, the cash position. The total bank's cash account at the end of September was $2,120,013, which is a decrease of $127,872 for August. I'd like to also point out that the two columns, the first one should be 8/31/2016 and the second one should be 9/31/16. The total restricted or reserved cash was $1,359,361. And the total cash in all accounts as of September 30th was $3,479,374. There's a debt service payment due, it's actually due today, and that has been made. Page two. The general fund has year-to-date revenue of $137,000 and year-to-date expenses of $765,500 for a net balance of $328,500. That's normal for a pre-tax flow. Public utilities fund has year-to-date revenue of $115,000 and year-to-date expenses of $275,000 for a net balance of $140,000. Harbor fund has year-to-date revenue of $199,000, year-to-date expenses of $230,500 for a net balance of $31,500. That gives $23,000 lower than this time last year, and that is because of the recognition of gaining still hold of revenue on July 1st last year, which we don't have this year. We'll see that revenue triple through month by month. And net fuel profit was $5,000 lower than this time one year ago. I believe we can attribute part of that to the plane slam event, all the boats that came out of Philadelph before they left. This time is all to see if that's a trend, or if that was just in August of last year. The sanitation fund has year-to-date revenue of $47,300, year-to-date expenses of $31,000, for a net balance of $16,300. Any questions about that one?
Any questions?
Finance department disbursed $123,930 for fathom expenditures in September, which were as follows. $115,180 for jet projects, $8,750 for harbor jetty for engineering. The tax collection statistics page is missing. Bills should go out by September 1st and you'll see that page appearing when you start paying in December. We'll be creating the new bills and the new software system. Go live date for the remainder of the financial management system is December 3rd through 6th, and the training we can left in the preceding week. Right now we're keeping in proprietary balances and getting a lot of help from the departments, which we're grateful to be so far, but the software is very nice. The last page, tax revenue. Bills tax revenue is 70% higher year-to-date than last year. And the occupancy tax revenue is 16% higher than year-to-date 2016. And local sales tax is 9% higher than this time last year. The admissions tax for the Hoister Farm event, the shut-in stuff, was negligible amount, but we did receive that. I did notice that we were seeing local sales tax was almost 18 to 20% higher, it seemed to have leveled off somewhat as far as the growth. We had a big jump in '16, it seemed to be leveling off.
Wasn't there some adjustment in the way sales tax was appropriated to us, or am I misremembering?
Uh, the county receives it, disperses it, and they were not sending us enough. When that started their audit, they get a month's unpaid caught up, so they should... Right now, we should be on track.
Okay, so some of that is in there?
That was last year, so this year, they caught up, I believe it was October, November 2015... 14, 2014. So we're all...
Okay.
Any questions?
Why the big jump in business tax?
People, uh, we... It was really hard to draw up for people that weren't paying.
So basically 15, people weren't paying? And you're calling for 3,500, that's a huge jump.
Those are actually, they're not even this year's, this fiscal year's taxes, it's the whole of last year, so we just... There were a lot of people that dragged their feet this year.
So the 11,000 should have been higher?
Yes. Yes, two...
They're paying all in three years.
Right, there were at least, at least two that paid three years. I expect a few orders as well. Any else?
Any questions? Any other questions, Mayor? Motion to approve the treasurer's report is submitted.
Tell them what you've got.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The report is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mayor, members of the council, may I ask another hand to the council for perhaps any good day in course with the board?
I have a question about the camp one-day training. It doesn't say what time it is, and is it open to council and yourself and to, is it open to the public to attend?
Open to the public, so by extension, open to council and to boards and commissions, because some of the billboards committee will be pending. Open to the public to the extent that the contract pays for 30 attendees. After 30 attendees, those folks will attend from the center. And yes, it's open to the public. The meeting starts at nine, starts from the start of 9/30, and then the day should end by about four.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Hang on a second. What about this reverse angle parking? What about parking, do you have parking related issues to spend your report?
Mr. Mayor, that was the report that went to the planning commission at the October 4th meeting. As instructed by the planning commission, I reported back in the summer, so that was defined as from this summer's observation of the... Any, any parking decision?
I'd like to know if any of the council members have a question about this at this time. But basically, the recommendation is we don't do anything at this point, correct?
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, thank you.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. The... Go before the... I have nothing to add to the report unless council has any questions for me?
I have a question.
Go for it.
A couple of months back at council meeting, Mr. De'Angelo has expressed some great concern about the house exploding collapsing on his building, and you were going to check it out. Is that a fact that the house is looking close to collapsing, or is that an exaggeration or misunderstanding?
Uh, I think it's a misunderstanding. I did do an inspection the next day and found the house to be in, you know, in fairly condition, but not into a condition where it's going to collapse at any time soon. I have put the owner on notice that he's going to need to do something with it pretty soon. It's getting in pretty bad shape. And I also let Mr. De'Angelo know that his concerns were... I mean, they're, you know, anybody has concerns with the, the house was not in danger of collapsing anytime soon. And he was happy with the comments that I gave him, so.
Thank you.
What do you mean by "clean"?
What's that?
What do you mean by "clean"? Mayor, did you give him that timeframe?
The owner?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I put him on notice that he needs to do something. He came in, asked me for some more time, because, you know, it's his mom's house and he's trying to figure out all that. So I've been in contact with him. Haven't put a squeak to the fire yet, but it's coming soon, yeah.
I noticed you did do some cleanup on the outside.
They, they have started to clean up the outside. They have, I think it was a few windows that were broken, and they had boarded those up at the least, which is okay with me. It's not letting water get inside the house to majorly damage the house.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much, Joe. Town Harrow.
Mayor Castle? I put an adendum on the sheet that is in addition to the report that I presented. Do you have any questions?
I appreciate the feedback, because I couldn't figure out the feet. It's all over the place.
Yes, sometimes it's hard for us to figure out too.
Not to be a headache, but does anybody break this down, make sure quarter, like for that first quarter? It doesn't show the relevant, you know, the difference between the two priority areas. Does anyone even break it? I mean, it's, I mean, not to be a pain in the butt.
We talked today not going out and about the, the chart that we have for the tax revenue, doing the same with the harbor revenue items.
It would make it easier to understand what's going on, because, I mean, you've got, it's broken out, you figured out the first quarter.
We should have looked at the picture and see, that would be out, which would be a lot better.
We're gonna continue to break it down. We're digging into QuickBooks. QuickBooks is limited. The software she's talking about is the town software, which is, is feeable to break it down in the fall. So I can do it monthly, just wherever you all want.
Yeah, I just want to compare it to purpose.
And, you know, I mean, we can, we can break it down to whatever, wherever you all want to see. You just have to let, let me know, let it out, what you want, and we'll do it too.
I just, I just want to see the total number of ships, boats that came in. I don't care what the length.
At the bottom, it's something we found in some of the reporting. We dug, we continually dig deeper. And we, we have come up with, and it's on the bottom of the second page, that the transit slips daily, weekly, monthly. We can't break it down any more than that. And we can average it out using the feet compared to slips many.
I don't, personally, I don't think I could care with the average. What I care about is boat revenue for that category and the number of boats that were in that category. For that time reporting, right? And that would be enough for me to look at year over year if I were sensitive.
And we can go back and do, 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 report the slide too, to see where we're at. And it also shows what we did this past year compared to 2016.
Okay, does anyone else in the house have a problem with what I said?
No, not really. I, you know, I think, I think this is an awful lot of detail. I think we need the right level of detail to decide exactly what that is. I've got no problem with what Joan said at all. I'd say that, not to my own point of view, as we introduce the new system and get straightened out exactly what we want to measure, I'm more interested in what we showed going forward than what has, you know, happened in the past, rather than trying to compare one thing to another. It's like comparing apples and oranges. So I, I mean, I think it's worthwhile to spend a fair amount of time deciding exactly what and how you want to report. And if, you know, you can bring it back and we'll talk about it, but... Anybody see?
I do have two things. One of them is this advertising for signage and security cameras, and you mentioned changing signage and that kind of thing. Unless you're gonna lose that move, I would ask you to hang on to that until we get some Main Street direction going. I think, you know, so signage and directional signage is all part of Main Street, and it should be consistent throughout the town. And the other thing is, the last bullet on the page says the harbor committee is to meet and discuss the future of the harbor and arena. Who is the harbor committee and why are they meeting to discuss the future?
Well, it's people that I have talked with in the past to have a committee that stakeholders.
I mean, who are they?
Well, we, we put together a couple of commercial workmen, a couple of the yacht club members, myself and Andrew, to start discussing what was, what would they see as the future of harbor.
You already have harbor district, you do work, why do we need that?
That's different.
It's totally different. This is stuff that we need to go after grants, and what we're going to look at as far as improvements to the harbor. And this is also information that we need to gather from the stakeholders of the harbor, the people that use it daily, and present to you all what the futures... What they see as the future.
Maybe, you know, just the terminology, but I mean, there is a harbor master plan that we go by, and if you want to, if that group is to provide suggestions for future updates to harbor master plan, you know, that's fine. I think there probably should be some council representation on this group that's gonna be meeting on a regular basis.
We haven't met yet. We're actually...
And I think it only endorsed by the council before it is established. As, as all the other ad hoc working groups are.
Right, and what we had anticipated was to bring this forth, and then you all decide on what needs to happen.
Okay, because this just says you're gonna discuss the future of the harbor, so.
Well, this is. It's all the future of the harbor. But it's all relevant to you all, as to, to the council.
Okay, so where do we go with here? I think where we go with here is you would come back to us with a proposal for a harbor committee. And perhaps some names for, for, let's say, places, organizations for which there should be representation, and then take that, I think take that to a work session.
Right, this is all a work, work in progress. This is all to build on what we need to look at as, what you all need to look at as the future of the harbor.
Yep, I think that's starting sort of from a user's perspective.
Right.
Joan, did...
I have a different question, different topic, so we finish.
Okay, I think I'm still, yeah, and I have a different question, so. Samuel, you got any questions for this? I'm gonna be good.
Okay, can I comment on Steve's, a little about the signs? That, that grant has to be spent by January 2017.
Great, you're going, you better go ahead and put your signs up.
Exactly.
Have we closed the sale of the lots at the harbor?
Lots 19 and 20, I'm sure too. Yes.
That's the one I need, right?
May it finally be closed?
Yes.
Okay, because I was questioning Southport's sale a few, which I believe was contrary to the lease.
Which one dominated, one 19, the top sale?
And when was the time of the sale?
Month ago. Year lease, month ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we got, um, how do you feel about the parking lot over there in Shane? It's a mess.
It is.
I mean, what are we doing to remedy the problem? It's been going on for the whole weeks of summer.
Right, we've discussed having the harbor tractor to grade it, or either... When I go to get a tractor that's not available, I'm stuck.
I think we need to set some times then, where this tractor will be used. I mean, you gotta be able to split this thing, we're not that big of a town, you have five tractors.
We have a test of a huge liability there, we're ignoring it, and I think it's time to stop ignoring it.
And then there, the other big liability that's been opened up for 18 months is the dock, or the boardwalk over by the Shane corner. That's never been used for anything, and it's still wide open. Someone's been up, that's not a good thing right there. That's gotta be closed.
Right, and we, I was just talking to him.
I mean, it was bought up three months ago, nothing's happened.
Well, we couldn't do anything until the dredge project was over.
Didn't even use it in the second phase.
We wanted for sure they...
They still identified that as a US Army Corps of Engineers easement, and we were highly recommended not to put that back until they were cleared, but... Has that been done now, preparing and replacing the boardwalk in the west career of Shane complete, or is that not...
That's not what I was asking you for.
It's still wide open.
It says it's complete here.
As far as maintenance repairs. It's, it's not complete.
Okay, it's not like, alright.
I think you made it down right away.
Yes, provided, or someone breaks their neck, and then provided for that, that's not good.
This is probably just, is this a topic for a work session? Who should be maintaining that lot? He who owns the tractor and manages the tractor, or who needs to borrow it? I think we need to figure that out.
Yeah, I think, I think a work session, it's a good work session topic.
I don't think we need to figure it out, I think they need to figure it out.
Yeah, so it's not that big of a...
A lot of initiatives.
Somebody needs to tell us it's operational.
It's just a meeting schedule, that's all it comes down to.
I think they need to tell us everything. I think they need to go ahead and do it. And, and so we don't get complaints on it. I mean, we get complaints, not only at the harbor, I mean, it's... Make us in the town, it leaves a lot of desire too, when different things are happening in town. Trash cans full with fish and beer, lights are down, uh, some problems in the park, the alley is screwed up, so... You know, I think you're a real shorthand. You got a shorthand on people working on your public work.
Yeah, you're, we're, we're down with our, we're down with one man or two man, or?
One man.
Down one, or you have, you down one, or you have only one guy working now?
No, we're down one man.
But you also had one man out for two weeks.
Especially.
Right?
Well, is that one man at work? I'm not, I mean, I'm not gonna, I mean, no, no reason sugarcoating this. I mean, if you have, if he's working, he's not working, he's here, he's not here. I mean, we, we have, there's so many things pointing disarray around town that, I mean, you got a letter that we all got, or I don't know if you got it, I got another letter from a citizen about the trash right by the van, stuff all through town, just all over the place. And I got a letter from citizens from Central Park about the gazebo, basically, it's pretty much starved out, nothing being addressed there. There's a lot of stuff going on in town. There's trash in the port, uh, New York doing the landscaping in the port, being lack of trees. There's all sorts of stuff going on. But it's, it's getting addressed, that's the whole problem. That's what I'm concerned about, and it's... Where are the potentials going through the roof right now in this town?
Well, no, no, wait a minute. I don't have a problem with a discussion.
I didn't, don't talk to the wrong guy.
No, no.
Let's, let's let Charles be your real guy.
Yeah, no, no, I got you on it. Andy, save it. Your time is coming again. Is there anything else we have for Charles?
True.
Thank you.
Yes, alright.
I think so is streets.
Yes, I will.
We put the Harrow move, the library.
I don't have, can I ask the AI to... I have a request made on the memorial library spreadsheet. In almost every category, you show a total for the current year and a total for the prior year, so there's a comparison. Could you please add a total line to the prior year for income? And if you can't go back, at least start going forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, go ahead.
We have Chelsea, as you all know. She left to be a Virginia ABC agent.
Did you go to speak just a little louder?
She left to be a Virginia ABC, uh, Irish control agent. She's retired now, so... She left to come, Tom Pops was promoted to sergeant, take her to Sergeant Slop. And then Jake Luer, who's promoted to a master officer, you know, building, Tom Pops, Master Officer Slop. Hired a new guy. Going through some stuff with him, he'll start school on January 3rd. And we're advertised now for a Chelsea vacancy. So, I don't know, I mean, if I don't ask, they go upstairs and I'll move out.
Uh, any questions? We're trying to get another female officer to take the place?
I mean, of course, we would like to have a female officer, but I'd like, probably go to the end of Rainbow, um, front. go to the end of Rainbow, um, front of the, it's just a few apart from me, because that's what it is.
Okay. See, you finished a class on bias-based policing?
Yeah.
Good. Not now, I'd like to hear about that at some point, but, not for, you know, not for this forum. And you had another felony arrest, let's see?
Sure.
Yep. Uh, busy, busy.
Okay, busy, there's still, uh, the, uh, car break case, and plea, I told you that, I'm not sure, uh, I didn't like it, but I'm not counsel of attorney, um, got thirty years, haven't been sentenced yet, or he has not been sentenced yet, but, um, plea's thirty years, that he will spend in prison, and, uh, Jay is finishing up on that second case, well, he's finishing, he's got six boxes with evidence, that's the odd one, so.
Chief, are you, uh, are you going to, uh, be involved in any kind of, uh, security and hold spot come day?
Um.
From what, national, for national?
Man, we'll have, um, on the schedule in front of me, I'll, I'll be working. I heard about it, I don't think it'll be here, I'll keep mine, I'll keep mine, so.
We need to have, I think we need to have an officer in, in the, uh, in the sentencing of the, of the, of the, of the.
I don't have anybody, we know that, but.
I mean, that, get together the candidates, see if we can get some help from that, from the holding.
We'll keep, um, just a problem person.
That's the intimidation factor, but, but.
It's against the law, we can't do it, so.
That's right.
Smash him up.
Okay.
Let both of them deal with it, spend that year.
Uh, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, public utilities.
I don't have anything to add unless there are questions.
Uh, I do have a question. It, hospice average has been, actually, it's been great, the limit is three tenths kilogram per meter, annual, year-to-date is point oh eight, so, that's where we failed before.
Correct.
Uh, so that's looking really good, and my question is, what changed? What are we doing differently that now we're at?
We've been keeping a close eye on the measures, and we've got some help from the, uh, from the companies, and, um, I guess that's the main factor in, uh, in all of it.
Well, I mean, are we doing anything different?
Well, we keep the measures running, and then, uh, you know, we pull it every three months, and check them for water in the casings, and put it back in, and if they need to be rebuilt, we, we, rebuild them, or we send them out for repairs, check and pay.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Okay, well, I guess we got public works next. Right, public, public works.
That's me, too. I mean, yet, well, I, I've heard the concerns, um, voiced, uh, we, you know, we're behind the eight ball on a few things, I mean, the, the gazebo we've been looking at, trying to just figure out what exactly, what path to take, whether to just patch it up for right now, or actually go with, uh, maybe different design on the rails, and actually, you know, redo the rails. Uh, right now, what we're gonna do is get it, uh, fixed up, repaired, get the rotten wood repaired, and paint it up, and, um, just get it ready for the, uh, ground elimination. And going forward, if we, uh, at some point, we'll probably redo the rails, uh, in a fashion that can take a little bit more than beaten. And the gazebo took a little bit of the beating when the playground was down, because that was pretty much the playground, um, for, uh, for a pretty good while, so, um, you know, uh, and there are, there are other issues around town, but, uh, we're working on, um, you know, we're planning to catch up, and we are one man down, um, but, uh, really, the, the men that we did have working seem to spend about ninety percent of their time picking up brush right now. For some reason, the brush has just been, uh, a real burden this summer, it leaves very little time for anything else, and, um, but that's, you know, it's kind of, I don't, I don't know why that is, I, I've never met it, uh, you know, take up so much of the guy's time, but this summer, it just seems to be a real problem.
Have the GFI outlets on the gazebo been addressed, or have they already been addressed?
Well, the, they were, they have, the coverage hasn't been replaced, but, um, as far as I know, they're in working mode.
We had problems with last two concerts we had at the park, um, they weren't working, and we had to have someone go in to the.
Truth is, well, yeah, I mean, and what we'll need to do is, if, you know, as long as we know that, that there's gonna be a concert, or, you know, somebody can be there to open up the gate to, um, to make sure the GFI, and make sure the break is working, I mean, you know, so, that's, you know, that shouldn't be an issue, getting into the power, getting into the power, and then to make sure that we're all working, you know, that, that should be an issue. As long as we know that there's gonna be something, well, I think Jen took care of the brush time, and she's probably capable of doing that.
We actually had someone climb over the fence to get it for the first time. I guess the point I'm making is that our schedule for concerts is on Jen's calendar, it's on the town calendar, it's on a number of different calendars, so, it should be obvious if anyone looked at the calendar to see that the gazebo is gonna be used.
Okay.
Um, in the meantime, Jen finally came to one of our last concerts, and said, anytime there's a problem, give her a call, and she tried to be there, and she's intent to make sure that when the band sets up at five o'clock, so that they're ready for, you know, doing their setup.
Right.
Everything works.
Right, okay, and we'll make sure there isn't any.
Actually, Joan, I think you raised a more general point, and that is, anytime there's an event at the gazebo, somehow there needs to be a connection between, uh, public works and whoever is doing that, to make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be, correct? I mean, that's basically what you're talking about here, it shouldn't just be for the concerts, except the park, it should be for any event that's there, so I don't know.
Yeah, and in some cases, I think, public works, to be honest, has checked during the day to make sure everything's working, but it's raining, something trips.
Yep.
And, and the GFI, there are no GFI buttons to push, so they actually have to go back to the brick building.
It's a breaker, I think.
The breaker. And that's, that's.
Are the GFI's in the panel?
No, no, I think it's, it's probably.
Well, I don't know.
It's a breaker or GFI.
It's the breaker.
It's in the panel. It's in the panel, I mean, that would be if there's no button to push.
It's a panel GFI.
And that, I don't know what they do, I know they have to go to the brick building and actually adjust something.
Right.
They reset, right.
They reset the GFI to trip. Through the breaker.
But there's no power in the outlets. To me, that means a GFI trip, but I could be wrong. Bottom line is, we weren't getting power, didn't have a way to get to correct it, and at one point, Jen came and opened it up for us, another time we couldn't reach her, and so someone went over the fence and didn't have to be done.
Right. Well, I was gonna say, Brett, if you can talk to Dave, and fly about how we might make sure the loop gets closed anytime there's an event.
There was an issue with the company to just kick those off for.
Yeah.
Outlets, and that basically was.
Right, right. Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
What about, um, how long is this, is there a physician that's been advertised?
Yes.
Anybody apply? Does anybody apply?
Yeah, we've got applications.
Somebody called, anybody?
No, we're gonna do it this week, next week.
I mean, how long is, is this not available?
Hmm, a month.
Well, I mean, what I'm getting at is, we've got so many things that are disarrayed in public works, not, I mean, if we're running around catching brush all day long, I'm not beating up on it, but, I mean, we gotta address some other problems. I mean, if that railing fell in, in the gazebo, that's not good.
Nope.
Um, the GFI, I mean, that's, that's part of the process with an event, we've got people, I mean, I'm getting complaints like the trash cans, it's stinking, I mean, there should be a, some sort of.
They've taken it out.
I know, but, I mean, how often do they kind of wash it, wash it out?
Uh, well, I think they just did it about two or three weeks ago.
But now the fishing gear are down, and so.
Not often.
Well, is that the fishing gear's a disaster right now?
Well, that may be.
The public works maintenance worker, the job offer doesn't even close until October thirty first, so, I don't know that they can do a lot of bedding until they get all the applications in. It hasn't closed yet.
We're just doing what's out, too, I mean, this, what I'm getting at is, we have enough, we have enough people, and we can hire a lot to handle it. I mean, we've got sand, the, the, the dunes, and the weapon, and all that stuff, and that's a whole other thing, it's not even on the schedule for that.
It's something we talked about.
Yes, I think, I don't think that's gonna be a real issue.
It was the last two years.
We have recommendations from the weapon and dune board that we're going to, uh, be implementing.
I mean, we gotta never let her tell any culture about the trash can.
The recyclable.
Recycle it, of course.
But, you know, um, I think I, I don't think I'm telling you an untruth here, man, I tell you, no matter what you do down that beach, there's gonna be sand up on the road, there's gotta be a way to keep it off the road, somehow.
I, I do that.
So, we'll do, we'll do what we can, we're gonna do with the dune board, as a person, and it doesn't look like a lot, you know, that's why I said, I don't think it's gonna be, as far as our part of it, you know, what we need to do, uh, sort of recommendations, I, I don't think that's gonna be a, a real burden on us, and we're really thinking about getting the same people to put the fence up to the army floor, to actually do our part of it, it's not a whole lot, and, you know, keep our guys.
But once those fences, once those fences get filled up, we're supposed to move forward, so, are we gonna hire someone else to do that, or do you have to?
See, yeah, see, I guess, now, yeah, made it, if we have the money to do it, either that, or, I mean, you know, if we don't have the manpower to.
Someone did that, my dad wanted to do that. We don't have the manpower.
They'd be getting hired out.
I mean, is it cost justifiable, considering the, the way that things are going, is it easier or cheaper, cost it out, or to hire someone? Contract work for government is not a bad one, it's cheap.
Let me suggest something.
You wanna get that?
No, I know, I know, I think it's a reasonable, you know, we're coming up to the, to the budget season, we're coming up to the time, and we're going, going to do a budget, and maybe this is, this is something we should discuss in budget time, because that's when we would be considering adding a position, then we can talk about the trade-off that you were mentioning here between hiring, you know, outsourced it, or, or hire somebody to take care of it, and whether we can afford it or not, maybe, because that's, that's the other piece of it.
I just don't want to go to disarray, because.
Sure.
The direction the town's going right now, resourcing stuff, starting to break down, not being paid in tariffs because we're understaffed, it's not a good thing.
Right.
Not a good thing at all.
So, we're actually looking at ways to try to fund, uh, we'll say temporary employees for the summer, during our peak, and try to.
It's part of the best ideas, I mean, you know, it alleviates the time, probably, of full-time people.
Right.
But, I mean, it's not like, you know, do the same thing in our.
Right, that was our fault, we, we need to look at that, and figure out a way to pay for it, because it makes sense, and they're responsible for a lot larger beach, uh, as Dave alluded to, the amount of brush that's been hit by that, I hear, has been somewhat of a burden, uh, you know, you could hit it in the streets, parks, beach, it's a lot of responsibility for individuals.
Got a couple bathrooms you're gonna keep clean all the time?
Basically, you know, talking about trash, you're talking about trash on the beach, you're talking about trying to keep gutters clean.
There's a lot of, maintain the cleaner boxes, that some are not, that touch them a lot, so I have.
It, it.
And because of this, it's an undertaking responsibility, but it's not a job.
We need to establish a level of service that we're comfortable with, and we figure out how to, how to approach it.
Right, so, so, perhaps we have further discussion on this when we go through the budget, because that's, that's how we're gonna be steering this.
Quite honestly, I'm not passionate about that.
That's the key.
Excuse me?
That solves potential funding for next year, it doesn't solve any problems for now. I would like to comment, I had an informal conversation with Fred earlier today, and I was asking specifically about the recommendations made by the dune board, and he said, because they said they wanted a certain number of them, they should be done by November first, when we talked about it, he said, they just received a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers, and they're November first, and now it's been shifted to, they will start no earlier than November fifteenth, and he assured me that town could implement all of those high priority issues from the dune board by the November fifteenth date. Did I misspeak?
There you go.
Okay.
Larry, that is correct.
November fifteen.
November thirteen is the earliest, at the earliest that the spring contract can be backed in town to, to do this.
Well, that's, that's unfortunate, but I think Joan's focus is, will the town be able to get done, did you get it, correct, Joan?
No. Right, said, assured me that with the date going up to November fifteenth, instead of November first, we could be, well, when, what the, our board, dune board said we should do by November first, we could have it done by November fifteenth.
Basically, blocks and buses.
Yes, or two weeks after that, get done.
Actually, I think that's where I had said, it's, where does the town, when we be doing it, can we get it done in time?
Yes, the time being November, uh, later than November fifteenth.
Right.
So, then, that affects some of the problems.
Right.
You're dedicating resources.
Put on a blackboard.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
So, you don't have got too big to work with.
Well, like I said, we, we're not sure that it's gonna be us that does the recommendation, we may be, um, getting an outside, you know, contractor to, you know, take care.
What was that decision that you made? What was that decision that you made?
I'll make it as soon as I see the, the, the dune board recommendations.
It's not that far away.
The issue, issue I have is that you're employed, you're, you're, you're a employee, you're trying to hire, that, that doesn't close until thirty first of October, correct?
Right.
So, you can't hire them.
No, actually, it was open ended, there's no deadline.
It's open until filled, but I, I hadn't put a date in there, so I put, I did two months out.
So, there is no date, or?
No, there's a date, we're open ended.
Yeah.
We're planning, we're planning.
It's open until filled, is what the ads have.
Okay. They would put a date.
That wouldn't not make you.
Date twenty first, they make much difference in that, than, than thirty first. Dave, I don't think you're, we're still gonna be way shorthanded.
Dave, you haven't seen the, the dunes and weapon force recommendations yet?
That I've heard, put it in tail, but I haven't actually seen them.
Get that out for a moment.
Okay.
Yep, it's been out for a month.
Okay.
Well, I think they said that they've been looking at John.
I'm sorry?
I think they said that they've been looking, struggling with John Hopper.
John was part of it.
John was part of looking at it then, so.
That's true.
John should know what's going on.
Right.
Because you don't, doesn't mean your department does.
Do we communicate this week?
Well, I always ask when, you know, I would make the decision, and I'll make the decision when I see it, I haven't seen it yet, but, I make, when I see it, I'll, I can't make the decision without having seen it.
Did you, did you know the job was working?
Just curious.
Yes.
I'm trying to teach you.
Well, I heard a tale, that he was.
Anything else?
I think we just lacked some communication.
Oh, right, yeah. Anything else, guys? All right, thanks, Dave. Uh, recommendation.
I don't have any other.
Okay, anything fast? Let's go on, next item is to submit the joint public hearing of the draft comprehensive
Um, Ms. Mayor, as a council, this, uh, couple, previously, um, I think she's taken some time to look at the, uh, grant, and I've received comments from some council members, also been, a report that about some planning commission, uh, on November first. and I've received comments from some council members, also been, a report that about some planning commission on November first. Uh, so as a result of that, I'm not fully meeting planning commissions. December sixth, that's the date for joint public hearing. Uh, so the project and planning is set that same day as a joint public hearing date for the comprehensive or direct document.
Make a motion, September sixth was the joint public hearing of the second plan.
There's a second?
That can...
Correct, okay. Uh, is there any discussion on that date? No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? September sixth is the date, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, for what it's worth, the planning, the coastal, uh, the weapons and coastal dune board recommendations are in the minutes for this very day. So we're beginning of that, of the agenda packet for this very day, and presentation that I have for our conference, we're gonna have in months. It's there. Available for your read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item of business is waste collection and disposal services contract extension. Cut forward.
It's time to renew our, uh, garbage collection contract. Uh, Davis is the last of three extensions from some, of the original contract. Uh, the rate goes up to thirteen eighty seven can, I believe it's thirteen eighty, uh, thirteen, uh, so, um, and we collect thirteen seventy six per can, and the difference will be made of the penalties and interest that we, uh, we apply. This will be the last year, so, um, if it's approved, then we'll, um, uh, continue with Davis, and then next year we'll, we'll put it back out there.
Okay, um, may I have a motion to approve the third extension of waste collection and disposal services contract with Davis disposal, starting November first, make a motion. The second, uh, is there any discussion?
Will that increase our bills?
Thirty five minutes.
Will the citizens bill be increased?
Everybody has a question.
Back to, back to, December first?
November first.
No, there will be no increase in rates.
Thank you. That's what I...
Yeah, that was, that was a question.
We, last year, we absorbed the increase so that we didn't bill the citizens the increase, and I was asking whether or not we're going to do the same again this year.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
There's no increase in, in the tax.
The bills for the citizens, whatever, so we will not, we will pay more.
That's correct.
Thank you.
We, the town. It's not just the citizens. Tax.
Oh, well, it's, uh, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I just wanna be sure.
Yeah, so any further discussion on this? All in favor of approving the third extension to waste collection and disposal services contract with Davis disposal from November first through to October thirty first? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Uh, let's see here. Weapons and coastal dune board reappointments.
Ms. Ann Hayward Walker is the chair, her position as chair member expires, um, on the twelfth of November. She's been contacted about her interest in continuing to serve, and she agrees.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Ms. Ann Hayward Walker to make the weapons, uh, second. Any discussion? Only discussion, I'll say, is that I think she's done a superb job, and I think the whole committee has done a superb job, so...
Ms. Ann, you can tell on that, it's great, thank you very much.
Please thank her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Walker is reappointed to the weapons board. Uh, Zenith Bank Credit Line, you're open.
This credit line, um, the application that I'd like to submit is, we've had it for our line since two thousand eleven. I don't think it's ever had to be used, but it will cost us twenty six dollars to keep that money in case it is, this is needed. They waived the three hundred dollar application fee for us, and I'm recommending that the resolution operating a new and money credit issue making about five hundred thousand dollars. Steve, sorry, I should have shot.
They have a motion to renew, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, no, I believe I need to read this resolution. Uh, authorizing renewal of a line of credit with Zenith Bank. Whereas the town of Cape Charles has carried a line of credit with Zenith Bank, formerly known as Shore Bank since two thousand eleven, and whereas the town council of the town of Cape Charles desires to continue this line of credit, and whereas Zenith Bank has offered the town of Cape Charles a five hundred thousand dollar unsecured line of credit with a variable interest rate of prime plus point five percent, with a floor of three point seven five percent, now therefore being resolved by the town of council of the town of Cape Charles, Virginia, this twentieth day of October two thousand sixteen to authorize Mayor Proto to execute the loan documentation to renew the unsecured line of credit for five hundred thousand dollars with Zenith Bank. In the event the mayor is unable to sign the documents, both the vice mayor and town manager would be required to sign. The credit line would be available for use as determined and authorized by the town council of the town of Cape Charles. This would be adopted by the town of Cape Charles on October twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen. Lily, this is a roll call, or is it not? So I need a roll call?
Book, book, yes. Brad, yes. Brett, yes.
Val, yes.
The motion is carried, thank you very much. Parking restriction request, the B dot resolution, it's a request from Mr. Stephen Fox, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, town council, if you recall, we discussed this previous work session when Mr. Fox was requesting the lead walk to his residence, uh, the, sort of, strict, if you will, to prevent, excuse me, parking in kind of his, uh, lead walk, uh, due to the, sort of, the geometry of that, uh, the curved line there, which Mr. Fox has included a picture, which is included with the agenda packet. You can see there, almost it provides a retaining wall, uh, so to provide access, it would be, uh, as much needed to give a, restrict the access so that you can walk through the lead walk, as opposed to trying to jump up on the curb, which is a way there. Uh, the staff does recommend, we need a discussion of resolution and support for the request for Stephen Fox for the parking restriction at One Monroe Avenue and adoption of the resolution by roll call if it deemed appropriate.
All right, I'll read the resolution first, to get things out of order last time, but I think we'll be all right. It's resolution number two zero one six one zero two zero A, supported request from Stephen K. Fox for parking restriction at One Monroe Avenue. Whereas the town received a request from Mr. Stephen K. Fox for an area restricting parking, for area, an area restricting parking at One Monroe Avenue, and whereas the letter cited an issue regarding access to their lot, which is elevated, elevated above the street level with a lead block consisting of two steps as their primary access to their dwelling. And whereas the designation of the area in front of the lead access as a no parking area would ensure adequate pedestrian access to the entrance of the dwelling. And whereas although this request falls under the curfew of the Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Fox has requested the support of the town council to submit with his application. And whereas after discussion at the September twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen town council special, special meeting, it was agreed to support the request for Mr. Stephen K. Fox for a restricted parking area at One Monroe Avenue in front of the lead access to the dwelling. Now therefore, it is resolved that the town council, the town of Cape Charles hereby expresses the support of the request for a no parking area at the entrance of the lead access at One Monroe Avenue to be adopted by the town council of Cape Charles on this twentieth day of October two thousand sixteen. They have a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Second.
A motion in the second, it'll be a roll call vote, please.
The town, a yes.
Brett, yes. Brad, yes. Book, which is.
Motion is carried, thank you. Oh, yes, here we go. Uh, this is the USDA RD, rural development application.
Um, this application was already approved by the budget adoption move. Um, it's for the police vehicle for this fall, if USDA RD approves to have the money at, um, at that time. Um, the application's already been submitted, but when they're looking over it, they need a copy of, they need, in the minutes, stating that the council has discussed it and approved the application.
We've already approved it.
Right, so...
So I give a motion to approve, oh, sorry.
To, um, to vote to approve the application.
No, no.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, is there any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Uh, next word of business or comments from Mayor and Council. Andy? I think I saw that tonight. We love listening to you talk, say what? Hi, Steve?
Um, yeah, didn't have anything like that, but I have now. Public comments, comments, um, and the answer, which is too bad. If she takes her time to come in here, ask a question, or if anybody takes the time to come in here and ask a question, I don't think they need to submit a written request to have that answered. I think it's our obligation to answer that. Not all public comments ask questions, some of them are just comments, so they don't require response. But if someone comes in and asks a question, then we should specifically answer that question. Somebody needs to take that for action, and, and she should not have to resubmit in writing. The other thing I wanted to bring up is staff reports. Um, we talked about this one time before, um, and the council at that time decided against it, but I'm gonna bring it up again, that, um, staff reports, excuse me, yeah, department reports, not staff reports, department reports, are provided with the council package, which we received the Friday before the meeting, so seven days. I'm going to suggest that if council has questions on staff reports other than the treasurer, um, that they submit them in writing to the town manager and clerk. Those questions can then be distributed to the appropriate people who can answer them, and then either, depending on what the answer is, either the town manager or the parking head can answer the question at the meeting. Uh, if there are no questions on the staff report, I don't see any reason for staff to be held at this meeting to stand up and say, I have nothing to add. Um, questions that are submitted in writing should become part of the record, and, uh, you know, I don't know how we do that, but I'm suggesting that that be considered. We spend a lot of time on staff reports, uh, department reports, sorry, you were saying staff, department reports. Uh, and they spend a lot of time sitting here, uh, and many meetings for no reason.
Jerry, any, any comments?
No, I'm just making a comment, I just might, I don't know this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not asking for comment, I'm just making this up.
No, no, I'm asking for comments to comment on.
It's my turn to say something.
It's your turn to say something.
Yes, it's my turn to say something. Um, I believe at the last council meeting, I asked, at this council meeting, we be given a status update on the parking lot behind Basin Avenue? Because we approved the money and the project in the July budget, and it is now October, and I haven't seen any activity, haven't heard any activity in September and since then. So I asked, um, Brett, if you could please give us an update.
If I may simply comment on that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I agree with you. At the end of the last meeting, we, we outlined six different items. Those are in the, uh, those are in the minutes. My intention was to go through them and to get some response on, or some answers. And in the future, I, I ask that they be included as part of the normal agenda as something maybe called follow-up. So that if there are questions that come out during the meeting, then we have a formal record of what the questions were, and then get an answer of some sort, or a response, or a schedule, or whatever this is appropriate.
Right, and I went, went in there today to check on a couple that were major concern to me.
Yeah.
And said I'm gonna ask them to that.
So we can, we can do yours first, or we can go through these one at a time, either way is okay with me?
We'll do mine first, and then we can follow up the new procedure.
That is fine. Please go, please go for it. As far as the lighting for the parking lot, the new town parking lot, where we're property, Bob, you can jump in. We met with Patrick and, uh, two, two days ago, and discussed the opportunities we had, I think, at the last, uh, special meeting. We sort of discussed some of the alignment of the, of the parking lot, uh, as well as we discussed with Mr. Hand potential of maybe locating some lighting fixtures on this building that would help light that parking area. Uh, obdinate and take walks, and came up with a rough estimate, but it also, to light that lot before exceeding the money we had budgeted. Uh, so we are sort of, to point out that we're looking at alternate options, again, looking at, uh, if they, if they look at, uh, solar lights. Our thoughts are to sort of start with our pedestrian plaza that we hope to soon have control over on Strawberry Street, uh, right away. A non-existent right away there, the community plaza, uh, providing maybe solar lighting fixtures there. We sort of anticipate when the lot will be used, people will be parking in that general vicinity so that they can, Strawberry Street plaza to cut through to Basin Avenue. Uh, so we are pricing some options at this point, and also working with Mr. Hand to see what sort of collaboration we may be able to come up with, uh, to help out. But we also met with our, uh, landscape architect also this week, a little configuration that was Tuesday this week. Uh, it's sort of a lot of the parts at this point, but we're trying to put some of these things together.
And the other question I asked you about was our planning session. Um, in prior years when we've had one, we haven't had one this year, but in prior years when we've had it, we've had it for so long, it was time quick. And here it is October, and we still haven't set a date for it, and, I mean, we're gonna have the budget coming up in two months, and I think we really need that, the discussion at strategic level to help us plan for the budget.
I want to say scheduling's been difficult with travel, we talked about that today. We've reached out to Ted Poe, our Virginia Institute of Local Governments, on the, uh, sort of, services they provide, as they will provide a facilitator for strategic planning. Uh, so we're trying to get some, uh, dates that they would have a facilitator available to us, but then we will get to council, uh, and try to, try to make that date work. Uh, November's a busy month, but, you know, the sooner the better, is sort of our feeling. Uh, so we look to hear from us very shortly on, uh, potential dates to hold this strategic planning session at the council.
Jerry, anything else?
Um, I think the other issues you can go through.
So I'll, I'll go through these, first, the two of them we've covered, scheduling, scheduling a Saturday strategic planning session. We talked about scheduling sessions. The second one was the status report regarding the Mason Avenue parking lot improvements and entrance reversal, we've talked about that. The third one is milestones or timeline for Main Street program.
Yeah, I just say that, you know, we did send out the application, the job descriptions, uh, we had received some comments back. If, if anybody has any other comments, please get them to us as soon as possible so Lily and I can need to finalize the, uh, both documents, and we can publish it, because that's the, our main milestone right now is we gotta get a board. Uh, once we get the board appointed, it's very, you know, we're not really bending the wheel, they have a whole list of things, details, uh, that a board needs to do. So once, you know, the main thing right now is we have to focus on, uh, getting in, getting the application, or, excuse me, getting the advertisement published, uh, receiving the applications, going through them, and coming up with a board the council is comfortable with, uh, and then staff will work with that board. To, of course, probably first order of business, we do fi- hire... So of course, probably first order of business, we do hire an executive director.
So what I'd like to suggest are three or four things that we know that maybe you can do. Could you put some dates on those and come back and discuss that?
Yeah.
There's, there's hiring, there's, there's writing, the, the application or the job description for the, for the director is job description for the board, hiring the board, hiring the director. Whatever those steps are, let's see what they are. Put some dates in and then we'll track it.
Yeah, we can get the dates, but we can report on the next.
Sure.
You know what I mean? This is all that I have.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we can keep you apprised during.
I'd say, uh, no, we need to.
Yeah. We just have to get it done.
Right. So then, so that's, that's Main Street. Um, reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and Board of Supervisors with the investment calendar.
Yeah, we spoke with Jen. Uh, Jen does a very good job of that and, uh, she will...
Charity added the chamber.
Yes.
And she added a board supervisor step after she was admitted.
Yes, so she had to... Okay, so that's complete.
Yeah, along those lines, I was in the board meeting last night for the chamber. They're very eager to start working a lot more with the town.
Chambers?
Yeah.
Good.
Because, I mean, they just had their agricultural fair, it was a big, huge success, it over seven hundred attendees, which is good for a first, or reviving that event that used to be around back in the old days, so. Um, Dan, what ideas can I think of that's in both, chamber and town?
They can put, wasn't it, yeah, hey, let's do, uh, let's do the chairman.
Okay, and, uh, item five is follow-up on the Wetlands board recommendations.
Yeah, we've been...
And we, we, we have covered that to some extent, but I guess the idea is this is going to happen in a timely way, right?
Yes, yeah, we left twice this week to discuss that and, you know, the main thing was what, determining whether we need to outsource a portion of that, uh, some of it, I think we can handle in-house without disrupting, sort of limited disruption to the existing, or cast, the inside community.
So along the lines of Andy's suggestion, could we have updates on that and we'd read your reports?
Yeah, I can ask the board to provide that as part of the report.
Okay, um, I have nothing else along those lines.
You've got six.
You've got six?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, that's important, that six is very important.
No, it isn't.
Possible work sessions, how many do you want? Work sessions.
Work sessions.
Scheduling of, scheduling of work sessions.
We're referring to the, uh, I guess we can go to November, we will be adding a work session on the third, we'll be having an executive session on the tenth. Uh, I still do not have everybody's prioritizations back yet. So once I receive everyone's prioritizations, I will be able to prioritize the prioritizations.
Next question, that you establish a date, anyway, it doesn't provide a, then you move on without it.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put that in the report.
I did my next few days.
I'll put in the report a date.
So the other, the other item, uh, we are going to be meeting with the board of supervisors this coming Tuesday. Uh, there was an agenda set out with some, with some agenda topics, uh, that's been sent to the board of supervisors. I'm assuming that everyone is okay with what those topics are. I'm looking forward to this, I'm very encouraged that they are willing to meet with us and I hope that this leads to productive, more productive relations with the county. Uh, and I think that's about it.
As a point of interest, um, Mayor O'Hanlon sent out an email about two or three days ago saying that he was going to have, uh, District One meeting tonight at six thirty. And I asked, I sent him an email and asked him if he would please make every effort to schedule those meetings in the future on a date other than the third, Thursday of the month, since that seemed to be his favorite date, and that's when town council meets, which means we cannot be there and our citizens who want to do both have to make a decision. He sent me back an email saying he would do his best, but he would also try to schedule a meeting specifically for, in the town. So I asked him to please contact Rudy Hume to schedule it and have it here.
Anybody can tell Bramble to CC the rest of the summer, thanks. Just put the suggestion up, too.
What?
If Bramble put a CC with something, the rest of us on it?
Yeah, I was on there.
I would, you know. I just saw it a bit, too. I don't say no.
What is it you want? Do you want...
No, it'd be nice to have a CC to rest us on something like that.
Well, I hear it's CC you and he just did a response, he's fine. I will try to remember the QC over council members. I was just, I mean, my recollection is that he had a number of meetings the same night that we're having council meetings and it's frustrating to me personally.
Yeah, I, I think Andy's point, it would be nice if Bramble would just send it all, unless you...
Send it to...
Or send it to...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, not even, just send it to all, it's a CC.
What is it?
Whatever, notification.
You didn't get it?
Oh, no, 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 that's what I wanted.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Because it's a weak CC, I have no idea who it says it to. I assume all the council members got it.
That must be his, his email list.
Okay.
Must not be.
Can we also send an email to Bramble and ask him to add the town clerk? And then the town clerk just sent it out to us.
Yeah, because I hesitated, I was trying to pass it, because that's what I mean.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize that. I will follow up on that.
Okay, so I am, over my time comments, there was one other thing that, that actually, Joe, you had asked about, and that was what happened with the meeting with the North Hampton County Planning Commission. Now, if you don't mind, I'd just, it's only going to be a couple, three minutes.
I'm likely here.
Yeah, no, first of all, I had sent all of you out and note what my response was going to be to the planning commission and I copied the planning commission on that. So, planning commission had a number of questions for us. First is, what is your town, town vision of town edge zoning? And, and I went through what was in my notes, so if you have that, you can, you can see that. Uh, and they questioned me somewhat on that. And basically, what I told them is we want architectural requirements that are compatible with the rest of the town. We want, uh, we want things to be consistent with our comprehensive plan and also with their two thousand eleven comprehensive plan. Um, they recognized that Cape Charles is the only tourism draw, or at least the largest tourism draw in the county. And they are, they want to, they're, they understand the need for having nice buildings coming into the town, so they were receptive to that. So I can question, uh, what do you, what issues do you believe should be right within the town edge zoning? Basically, I refer them to our, to our comprehensive plan. I mean, I'm not going to go through, do this, do that, and do that. I think it's, it's not appropriate, that's something that needs to be worked out.
Yeah, we saw two letters, too.
Yeah, 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 we did, we did. I, I referred them to those letters. Uh, does your town envision any addition or expansion of infrastructure in the near future? And if so, would such infrastructure be made available to the town edge district? So I went through what some of the possibilities were, including, for example, the possibility of bringing tech wells online, uh, the possibility that wastewater treatment facilities might need to be extended down the road, depending on the population and how we grow. And my answer to, uh, making this available to the town edge zoning was that that is a possibility, but it depends on the terms and conditions. And it may be clear that if we're going to do that, what we don't want to do is put our own businesses at risk. We want to make sure, we don't want to gouge people, but we also want to make sure that this is fair to the town in terms of compensation and in terms of protecting businesses. They asked, are any county policies restricting or repeating development within your town? And I said, so what are those policies? And I don't feel there are any, as we know. Uh, by the way, you all had an opportunity to comment on these, so it's, you know, I don't expect any surprises here. What issues does your town see the county needing to address within the next ten years, which we feel is solely the county's responsibility and which require joint action by the, and which, which are solely the county's responsibility and which require joint action by the county? And I said demographics, we have a dropping population and an aging population. We have a fair amount of poverty, mostly in the county. Uh, workforce development and expansion, school system quality and medical care. And basically, all of those, I believe, are county responsibilities. In terms of, of demographics, the town may contribute to that in somewhat indirectly. Uh, and then the final report of the strong economies together effort recommended that future economic development be done on a regional rather than a county basis. Does our town support this recommendation? And if so, would it work cooperatively with Akamak, North Hampton Joint Planning District? And that one, I think, is a difficult one. And it's, the, the answer is in principle, yes. I, I believe regional development is a, is a good way to go, it's the right thing to do. In practice, it's not clear how it's going to work. The focus of the, yes, the strong economies together was heavily towards the northern end of North Hampton, Akamak. The, Akamak may be, may be the northern end of North Hampton. It's heavily focused on Wallops Island. And as far as what we do down here, it tends to be what we're doing already. It's agriculture, it's tourism, and those are good things and we want to keep them, expand them. But I haven't quite seen how we work together to do those things and how we get a benefit out of this yet. Uh, so I'd say we keep an open mind, we want to do regional planning, but it's got to be truly regional or it can't be focused in one area or another.
Well, you see tourism already shifting up to, sure, the right thing is...
Well, look...
Their heads are shaking, too, right?
Well, one of the, yeah, one of the things that was mentioned was space tourism. And so there's this idea that if people want to come and watch a launch, they want to see, they want to see, uh, moving vehicles, that maybe they want to tour the museum. Well, I think it's a great idea, but I don't think people are going to stay down here and drive the hour and a quarter or hour and a half to Wallops Island. So those are the kinds of things we would need to work out.
Well, uh, my two cents on that is, the problem with it, the, the, the regional thing scares me because it's all our focus up there. The problem is for economic development to happen in North Hampton County, for any business to move here, until they fix their frigging educational system, nothing's going to happen in this county.
This county...
It just won't.
The county is painfully aware of that.
That's the biggest problem. So if we get into the regional thing, it's all going to end up focusing on Akamak County and we're going to get kicked away, so, the county, not just, I say the town, the county, that's not a good idea. I don't think regional is actually the way to go.
And medical is a...
Correct.
That's a biggie. That's another... Eric, that's more.
This, it's, it's a question which is, which is, which is more the problem, it really is, you know.
That's what I'm actually talking about.
Well, so anyway, the, the only other person there was, was, was the mayor of Mesalax. And I think his town manager may have been there as well. Uh, no one else showed up. Uh, I talked to Peter Stitt, who's their planner. And the, what, what I said was well-received. They, uh, they've known, you know, what concerns we have. Uh, they are interested in working with us, they know the town edge is a concern. They feel like they have had the most, in, in terms of working with towns, they feel like they have had the most success with Cape Charles. Um, and at the moment, they're in the process of discussing their comprehensive plan and they're going to go forward with that. So they liked what they saw, they didn't give me a lot of feedback on what, on the details, but I didn't get anybody throwing a rock at me, and they, they got it, I think they understood and I think we had an opportunity here to work better with them on the board.
I hope we had an opportunity, knowing we need to go to supervisors to share our concerns about the county's lack of economic development position. And they've gotten rid of their, they got rid of the economic direct, development director. And they, the board of supervisors, based on what I've read, says they can manage that.
Joe, what I say, in terms of this, I believe economic development is one of the topics, we do sort of the topics, we do. So I, I think that we should, we definitely, we need to bring up our concerns relative to economic development. My own belief is, the biggest thing you need to do is fix the school system and efficient medical care, and that will go a lot of years towards helping the economy develop. That said, I'd also say, I don't view this as being such a, this meeting coming up being such a formal meeting. I think that if there are things that come up in the meeting council, want to discuss, we should go bring them up. We'll try to stick to the agenda, but if there are other things that come up, talk about it, right? This is the first meeting, they're, they're, they need to meet, um, twice a year. Let's see if we can get to it. I've talked way too much. Uh, nothing else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second, all in favor of adjourned?
Sorry.
Any of those?